October 28th, the county call over. Would you please stand for the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Before we get into the agenda, the back is going to have a short slide on the study point cemetery cleanup.
That was from the four H group that did the study point cleanup earlier this month.
Thank you. Okay, first item on the agenda will be approval of the minutes from the October 14 meeting.
Mayor, may I have your approval of the minutes of the meeting from September? October 14.
Second.
It has been moved in second to approve the minutes. Could the clerk please call roll?
Kayhart?
Yes.
Malak?
Yes.
Schreiber?
Yes.
Stein?
Yes.
Adams?
Yes.
Before we go, I just got to finish. So this is 23rd. This is the first minutes of the night. It's just the wrong set of minutes in here.
It may be. These appear to be, I don't know if it's a, because this would have been...
This would have been the meeting minutes that were...
The prior.
Right.
So I don't know if you want to defer the minutes. Because these are, at least the ones in the packet, are not the October 14.
Okay.
Correct.
I saw that and I was wondering.
Yeah, I didn't know if it was a typo or top. I assume the wrong one's in the back.
No, it looks like they're the wrong.
Do you want to, do you want to just defer?
Finally do that.
I guess we can just rescind that vote and put it on the next agenda.
Okay.
And we can do both the minutes.
Okay.
Is that fair? Do they need to do a vote to rescind?
Okay, we will need a vote to rescind.
Motion to rescind the previous motion.
Okay, there has been a motion in the second to rescind previous motion to approve the minutes that were incorrect. Could the clerk please call roll?
Kayhart?
Yes.
Malak?
Yes.
Schreiber?
Yes.
Stein?
Yes.
Adams?
Yes. Now, do we need a motion to defer?
No, we'll just put them on the next one.
Okay.
Apologize for that. That was probably my, my error trying to, we're so used to Zach getting everything down. I'm not sure where, I forgot all about the minutes. They quite honestly stood in the back and I sent out.
Okay, next item on the agenda will be approval of the statement of bills paid in the amount of $379,595.02.
Mr. Mayor, may I have a motion to approve the statement of bills in the amount of $379,595.02. Of two cents.
Second.
It has been moved in second to approve the statement of bills paid. Could the clerk please call roll?
Kayhart?
Yes.
Malak?
Yes.
Schreiber?
Yes.
Stein?
Yes.
Adams?
Yes.
Next item on the agenda will be request for comments from the public. There being none, we'll move on to the next item on the agenda. Considered property mitigation update pursuant to resolution 2019-11 related to abatement of condition at 1830 South 94th Street.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, before you, as an item considered, the updates made regarding property abatement at 1830 South 94th Street. If you remember, earlier this summer, there was a resolution passed by this board to essentially laying out the terms with which a house needed to have conditions abated related to a fire that occurred on the structure. We gave them 120 days from the adoption of that resolution, which was July 27th. That 120 days actually expired a little bit earlier this month, about a week and a half ago. So this will be the first time the council had the opportunity to review that. They have not completed all of the abatements as dictated in the resolution. However, they have applied for and paid for and been issued the necessary permits to do that work. Mike, do you want to slide forward? So these pictures were taken today. Nobody is inhabiting the structure as near as we could tell. An inspector was out unannounced on the 22nd of last week, performed an inspection. They came back the next day and set a meeting with the tax or the son-in-law of the property owner who's performing some of the repairs. They've got some repairs that are needed in the rafters and the soffits and some of the, some of the other framing support, but they were approved for insulation and drywall of the front half of the house and the remainder of which would need to be re-inspected. So all that to say is, they've not completed the abatement process within the stipulated 120 days. A lot of that from talking with the property owners was due to some of the costs involved. We reached out to them both in a letter and in phone calls to both the son-in-law and to the property owner, informing them about tonight's meeting in case they had the opportunity to come and give an update themselves. Apparently, we're not able to do that. But all that to say, because the property owners are making progress, nobody is currently inhabiting the building. They are requesting regular inspections on it per the public works and codes visits last week and with any outstanding code violations separate from any of what we already know. It's the staff recommendation that we review this item once again on the November 25th city council meeting to see, essentially checking on that progress and not move forward with any abatement by the city staff in assessing those costs to the property.
Does that require council action too?
It does not require any further. I mean, if you wanted to take action to actually, you know, force it to the next step, that if we're the city and then abates, then we would need direction. But basically, what we're saying is they're, they may not be working as fast as we would like. They definitely got a late start in getting their permits, but they are, they are working. The inspector has been on the project, in the property, and has approved some of the work.
But they're doing a good faith effort.
Yes, we did say they're a good faith effort this time. And we would just recommend bringing this back, basically 30 days, which the council means will.
We'll just do that.
And we'll reassess it.
Okay. Thank you.
Well, I have a number of items, but I'll try to keep it quick. A first one, myself and Zach did attend the International City County Management Association meeting, which was held in Nashville. It didn't make me want to move to Nashville, I can tell you that. But meet town, but not sure I'd want to live in least downtown Nashville. But it was a good conference. I think we were able to both bring back some different things from that and we can hopefully implement as, as we move forward. I was fortunate enough to get recognized for my 30 year, 30 years of service, at least as I see my, it's actually been about 32, but so it was honored to get that award through ICMA as a professional award. So just let you know where that was at. We did have, I think, a very successful truck retreat, and others may want to comment on that, but had the opportunity to come down and look at that. It looked like we had quite a few kiddos and people dressed and all kinds of costumes. I mean, some of them were pretty elaborate. I mean, they clearly spent some time doing those things. As you came in today, you might have noticed, or lack of notice, that there's some buildings missing to the north up here. So they have steadily been working on that. They expect, this weather obviously is not helping, some of that they can still do. They hope to basically have the buildings down, foundations by end of week, and then remove foundations and paving and the rest of it and be cleared by the 15th of November. So that they've always been trying to be done prior to Thanksgiving holiday. I think they have a few more days beyond that as far as they have 45 days left, they have the notice to proceed, so they have a little bit of extra time. Obviously, if it's weather related, we'll give them some, some appropriate extension. We got our property tax notice, so you know, November 1, the county goes through their process and comes back and says, here's your mill levy. They actually, and we're still trying to work it out, so there, we had actually, I think, proposed a mill levy based on value, about 45 point, I don't know the exact number.
45889.
Yeah, 45889. They came back with effectively no change in our mill levy. If you remember, they didn't have a piece of property. They still had it on the tax roll, was supposed to be on the tax roll. So we've, we've budgeted, assuming it wasn't going to be under, where they took that off, but they went back to the original amount, it appears, and then say, oh, well, your money went down, so your mill has to go up. It makes no sense, once again. We may come back to the council, we did this once before, where we actually adopted a resolution telling the county, no, this is the mill levy that we want. Now, we can't raise it, but some of you all may have been here, remember, we had that, I think, happen when Millard had a big tax issue along those lines, and all of a sudden our mill levy was going to go up a couple of mils. So we may come back at our next meeting with that recommendation. It's not a lot relative to the mill levy, as you know, it's around a quarter mil, but we're still not quite sure why, we're not sure why it would not have gone down values without, it's supposed to work in inverse, and it doesn't seem to do that. So we're, we're working on that, so just to let you know that. And then the, we do have regional dinners, I think I sent that out, and then we all have responded. If you haven't, let us know, and we'll try to, we're going to try to send those out tomorrow, at least in the reservation, I believe, November 7th, I believe it's today, 6th or 7th.
Oh, for the regional dinner, it ended Thursday 13.
Oh, 13. We had to have, we reserved by the 7th, so 13. So if you want to go, let us know. And then the last thing, I'm sure there's, there's questions over time. Bond closing on the hotel for the Hard Rock. It is scheduled for the 30th. At this time, all things are in place and all things ready to go. Route to the city, everything was done, signed, ready to deliver. Again, the overall is, there's kind of two simultaneous closings. There's a private financing closing that had to occur first, and then the bond closing. But we think everything is in place to move forward in closing the 30th.
About October?
About October, yeah. So this coming Wednesday is scheduled closing, so two days from now. So as of, as of today, everything was in place. I always have a little shake my head about how you can have a document, and then attorney comes in and somebody else wants to add the word D or O or N, and then four other attorneys have to change it, and it's like, seems way too complicated some days. But that's, that's the process. So as of right now, we think everything is on track to close on the 30th, and that will take care of all the financing pieces and then hopefully move to the next page. You have everything I know, and I'm going to answer questions if there are any.
Zach, do you have any?
Just, just to mention that on the 7th next week, the chamber will be having their monthly lunch, they'll be at the community center. I will send a reminder out about that this week if you want to.
If I may, on the truck retreat, and I know that there may, I did want to make sure to thank, we have, we've basically had representations from every, you know, from all our departments were there, in police fire, public works, admin, and Heather, who works at the front up here, really, I think, we go get her to make sure it all got set up. There's always got to be somebody that kind of makes sure everything happens, and I know she did a lot of work, and she's not here, but if you see her, give her a thank you. She, she definitely did a lot of work to make sure that happened. I do know all of the departments, like I say, participated as well, where she kind of, she had the map of where everybody was going to go and who's going to go where, and out there making sure, you know, we, we got trunks and had people participate. So if you have a chance, give her a thank you.
Thank you, if you will. Keep in peace.
You might recall the discussion we had last summer about the seizure of about 50 pounds of marijuana, and there was a conviction, however that went. But on those packages, a drug tax stamp is required. Y'all might also recall, first of the year, last couple of years, we've been presenting our law enforcement drug trust fund account and as a requirement. As these things have kind of evolved through the audit, what happens in the lack of a drug tax stamp, the state of Kansas then taxes those votes, and to the tune of, in this case, a little over $10,000. And we receive that money, but it will not go into the law enforcement trust account, can't be co-megled with those particular funds because it's not a seizure fund. But a drug, which we much dearly need, is about $10,000. So just keep that in mind. But we have $10,000 just went into the general fund, so that was my pitch for, if I come forward, you know, the money is already there, so, but that's, that's kind of the disposition finally, it takes, took about a year to get all that set up, so.
And can that drone carry me to Garden City, Kansas?
You cannot. Then they may have a different schedule.
Not because of my good habits.
You ready?
Nothing much really to report. It's truck or treat time, so as in tradition for the last five years, the fire truck will be out in the neighborhoods to give an extra presence, to slow traffic down, get some dark out in front of the traffic, you know. We finished up fire prevention week and everything else with that. I did present and attended a conference last week in Washington, courtesy of State Fire Marshal's Office in Washington State, out in the Cascades. So, you know, we had the white stuff already on the ground, but good information was brought back as of that as well. And then, as everybody knows, Ben's been here. Ben survived his first week solo, helped me around, and it was a productive week, nobody died, he didn't show to nobody, so doing good.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ben.
Yeah, I will give you a few updates on, that it's ice, you know, it's ice falling from the sky, just want to let everyone know, it's still be like 17 dimes. It's all good, the temperature's 39 degrees. Just update on a couple of little projects going on right now. The crack cell project's going, obviously it probably won't be going the rest of this week due to the weather. They've done our park, two city parking lots, Triant third, they did 105th and Overbrook and Edge Hill, and now they're up in Williams and Barnes. So you'll be seeing them in the next couple of weeks. That project will go until the first week of December. The other project off of 102nd Terrace and Edge Hill, scheduled to start beginning of next week, that'll just be a one week project in and out, so it'll come during this project. That project completion dates, also December 2nd, as a crack cell contract. After the 2019 street maintenance project bid, you know, remember, we probably had 105th Terrace and Shelton on there, that intersection that everyone's quite aware of. I went and I solicited quotes, since we had already put it out for public consumption and an open, open bid, and the prices came back way too high, I went out and I solicited quotes from actually just asphalt contractors who might be interested. I solicited quotes from seven. I received one bid back, so double the price that it should be, so we will not be doing that this year. We'll put on the list of things to do next year, get a more competitive price. However, if the temperatures do come up, one item that we, Mike and I have discussed is doing some concrete work down on Wood End and the truck routes, expanding those concrete radiuses, truck aid runs down there, because the trucks running off, we've got lots of running. That might be something that we do between now and the end of the year, because we have some budgets still left for that, so. Is that it?
Thank you. Lisa?
I don't know.
Okay.
It's sleeting outside. It's sleeting outside.
Okay. It's sleeting. Is that, is that any of the right stuff that you, that you do?
I mean, it's coming all day, so we get a lot of pressure, maybe that's the problem.
Okay.
I'm going to pass this down. This is a safety report that we get quarterly from TTBC, and there's just a couple of things that, that kind of stood out to me. You'll see that there are about four or five counties that the, on the first page where it says roadway fatality, have gone way out, and we're not one of them. Actually, one of those is about 50% of the year to date from right now, the Wyandotte County, which is in Red County, it's in Wyandotte County, it's way down in a few other counties, but there are some counties that are way out, way out, more double what they normally are, so. I'd be interested in seeing that. And then the backside of that, there's kind of some good information on the issues that the TTBC really looks at and the safety board, and some of those are pretty interesting statistics as well. And so, just thought you might be interested in seeing how our county's doing from a traffic standpoint, which is pretty good actually compared to the rest of metropolitan area. Other than that, well, I did want to comment on that work at the cemetery. These kids did a nice job. They worked hard, and they use it as a really good time of teaching for cemeteries and the inhabitants there, and also realizing needs to be taken well care of. It was a good day. The kids really benefited, and we benefited from their work. It's, hopefully, we can sometime, with weather like this, it won't be possible, but sometime get those big huge logs out of the way, and they're, it's going to be kind of touching because there's tombstones around some of those. They're cut up into about four or five foot sections, trees are about this big around. So it'd be good if we could get those cleared out. And we, we had talked about doing a dedication around, about Labor Day.
Veterans Day.
Veterans Day, there we go. And we have, the board has decided not to at this point in time. The cemetery isn't really where they want it to be, to show proper honor and to expose it to the publication and to the, to the families and the people that are injured there, so. So that's going to be delayed a while, but we are making progress.
Carolyn?
I was wondering about the Daphenbar contract. Isn't that coming up pretty soon that we'll be reviewing or reconsidering?
It's due, it's up at the end of '24.
At the end of '24, so we've got a year.
We'll be reviewing, we've already kind of started. Related to address counts and things like that, but yeah, we'll continue to, probably around the spring is when we'll ramp up.
And I was at the truck or treat event. Thankfully, the weather held off, and it was really nice for that. The kids loved staying in the fire trucks and police cars and everybody there, and I think they had a pretty good turnout. Heather did a great job, and really all the, all those folks that showed up did great. So that was a really nice event for the community, and the weather was good, so, so that was nice. One other thing that, oh, two things. One thing that I had on my notes was the street report. You said eventually we might see that report of, that Tammy I know has worked on already, and I don't know if that's, it's a work in progress?
It is a work in progress. It probably won't be until the first of the year.
Oh, okay.
I mean, we have comp projects going right now, we're getting ready for snow removal. I just have to go line by line through the data, and it's not my data, and we just can't keep paying the third party all that money to do that. So I just want to go through it and make certain that the mileage and everything's right. Like 95% of it's correct, but the mileage and there's some things that just aren't quite right, so I'm not sure if that's something that's, was wrong previously, or, you know, there's new people involved, so hopefully by the beginning of the year.
That's great. Perfect. And then just congratulations on your 30-year award.
Oh, that he survived.
Yeah.
I think they already have a tombstone up in the cemetery for him.
Here. Marty?
I want to add to that, next to Carolyn at the truck retreat, and it was fun, the kids love it. I, it was a little embarrassing because I just bring my pumpkin, I have my chair and maybe a skull. Carolyn had like three bells a day. And Mom, she had a whole setup for people to take pictures, so it was really neat. My hat's off to Carolyn, that took her probably an hour or two to set up, so it was neat. Everybody loved it.
And it made for a nice photo op.
It was. And it was, I asked Mike Martin, Batman doesn't come anymore.
No.
He hasn't been the last couple of years. Had an adult male, the rest like Batman, we thought he would.
He was our, he was our mailman.
Really?
He delivered mail.
Why, he really was. He had his whole mask on.
And he's gone. He hasn't been delivering mail.
He hasn't been the last, he drove up in his Corvette, the kids loved it.
See, I've looked at a lot of photos of him down there.
Right. He was the photo op, now it's Carolyn, so. Zach, is there a way you could post that video on the website? Have you done that?
The study point folks have already posted it on YouTube. We've shared it, they sent us, I want to say a week and a half ago.
To give them all that thanks, they need as much as they can, that's, that was, that was.
They got shared a number of times, so.
Good, good. Now that's, and congratulations, Mike.
Oh, thank you.
Mike, Old Dominion?
Yes, sir.
Any, is there more, we said, or can you say?
Before I ask any question?
No, no, no. I mean, I, you know, they, they have decided not to move forward with their project of expansion into the park and the exchange of land. They are looking at an alternate site.
Outside of Edwardville?
Outside of Edwardville.
That's where I would be on the campus.
Yes. It is in Wyandotte County, but it is outside of Edwardville. And so, I think, good that it's staying in Wyandotte County. I will say that, you know, they weren't, nobody came to try to, you know, say, hey, we got a better place for you. It was really just the financials. And really what it came down to was, you know, they have so much money invested currently in their site, and they were going to be investing a fair amount more, and at the end of the day, they were saying, just kind of like we do on our own house, well, they invest so much in the property that, that the value of it at the end of the day will really be worth what they, what they put into it. They were very appreciative of us trying to work with them. I think they'll continue to be, you know, a good partner with us for things if we need support and things like that. I mean, they're really supportive of that, but they will, they will be relocating out of our city. I don't know timeframes at this point. They're looking at a completely raw piece of land, so they've got to go through, obviously, planning and zoning and plating and probably public improvements, so I, I don't know more as far as their timeframe. I will, I would anticipate it's probably at least, you know, 18 to 24 months before they would, would probably leave the property, just by timing, I took my guess.
So where does that leave our other project? Does that, does that die with it?
I, I don't know that it dies. I will say that I've reached out to that property owner already, just to say, hey, we would at least like to sit down and talk. I mean, I think there's still some value in this discussion around parks and, you know, that site. You know, I know we've said this before, I mean, our existing park, the limits are still the limits, right? So if we want, if we want to expand recreational programs, we're going to ask them. So sure, we could go down there and build two new baseball fields and eliminate soccer, or we could build soccer fields and eliminate baseball, or, or do all kinds of things, but at the end of the day, you only have so many usable acres, and if we really want to expand the park system, we're going to have to look at other places. And I, I think what we've heard, whether it's been through that, through the, you know, presentation we did, or parks, the park comments, or just other comments at home, I think there's